Good evening. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Norfolk School Committee for Wednesday, June 19th at 7:06 PM. As we do with every meeting, we begin our meeting with a mission statement. "The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world." Roll call?
Jeff Chalmers.
Kelly Peterson.
Thomas Doyle.
Sean Dooley.
Ingrid Allardy.
And Mr. Flaherty called and said he was running a bit late, so he should be here shortly. Let's see, first what we'd like to do is remind everyone that this film, this is being filmed and taped for broadcast, so if you come up to speak, if you need to speak, please use one of the microphones. Introduce yourself, your name, how your, either your address or your affiliation with the schools. Okay? So, as we do at the beginning of every meeting, we open it up for public comment. Does anyone have any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. First order of business is correspondence. Dr. Allardy, the Franklin Elks donated two iPads to the schools last month, and so just the correspondence of Dr. Allardy thanking them for this. It was very nice of the Franklin Elks to do a fundraiser and include Norfolk in that, so we wanted to appreciate them for that. Michael Figo is the general manager of the Franklin Elks, Lodge Number 2136, so we just wanted to publicly thank them again. Chair report. All right. As far as donations, we have, Norfolk TPA has donated $720, which was a teacher stipend for the student council for Freeman Kennedy, and a parent made a donation of $70 to Freeman Kennedy. So, for a total of $719, could I have a motion to accept these donations?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And do we have the, we don't have the awards, right?
No, they received them.
Right. No, 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 I meant, do we have any description of them? Okay. We have two teachers who received awards this year. Chrissy Fatopoulos received the NCTA Service Award, and Ellen Horton received the NCTA Honor Award. And so those were presented last month, last week? Okay. And so we just wanted to recognize our teachers and just point out to the public how great our teachers are, that they're, you know, receiving awards, you know, across the state and being recognized for their outstanding leadership and achievement. All right. We have some students here to do an environmental project, and we're going to do a presentation.
They are. They're going to be using the smart boards, so I don't know if you want to move.
All right, so we'll move.
Okay. I'm Stephanie Patrick, district school psychologist and student council advisor, and here today we're presenting a project where we would like to ask for funds to fund a refilling station in the cafeteria, retrofit refilling station for water bottles to increase the use of water bottle, reusable water volumes rather than plastic water bottles. And also, we would like to be able to do a fundraiser to, say, you know, a day, a dollar, wear a hat so that we can have water bottles for students to kind of kick off and use other refilling stations. And with me, I have four student council members who have done a lot of work for this project. They've done a lot of research, they put it together, they did the PowerPoint, and they're quite excited about this opportunity. We have Lily Potts, Maddie McGinnis, Lindsay Kennedy, and Hayden Doherty. So, to begin, how we start the project was, back in the winter, Doug Williams and Marla Cohen from Stony Brook Wildlife Sanctuary came to speak to the student council about climate change, and after that presentation, the student council wanted to do something at school to help in reducing our contribution to climate change or our carbon footprint. And when we looked around the building, two ideas came up, making a more conscious effort in recycling and reducing the use of plastic bottles. So here, we're in an effort to actively reduce the use of plastic bottles, and these girls are going to present to you all their hard work. I'm really proud of them, they did a great job.
Impact of Plastic Water Bottles. Water, a natural resource, has become a commodity. The environmental toll that plastic water bottles have on the environment is great. We're proposing to eliminate the sale of bottled water in the cafeteria and to replace the sale of the water filling station that will be adapted to the pre-existing water fountain in the cafeteria. Students will now be able to fill their reusable water bottles anytime they wish, reducing waste and, in effect, our carbon footprint.
Current Water Bottle Sale. Currently at Freeman Kennedy, approximately 149 bottles of bottled water are sold in a seven-week period. To reduce our use and to promote the practice of reusable bottles, we propose a water filling station in the cafeteria. The water filling station makes sense for our green school.
Environmental and Financial Impact. On average, we use 168 plastic water bottles each per year. We spend, on average, $588 on water bottles each year. Bottled water can cost anywhere from 240 to 10,000 times more per gallon than tap water. The U.S. consumes about 31 billion liters of bottled water per year at an energy cost of more than 17 billion barrels of oil. That's enough to add to around 500,000 cars each year. Eighty-six percent of plastic water bottles are not recycled. It takes 700 years to start to decompose and take up to 1,000 afterwards to completely decompose. Millions of birds, mammals, and fish will die from plastic because they either eat it or get caught away. Place your recycling bins in the trash, place your recycling bins with the trash cans in the center of the cafeteria at lunch. Install and attach a refilling station to the current water fountain in the cafeteria. Benefits of Filling Station. We will help to continue the green school initiative. Students will save money by having a refilling station. We will promote the practice of reusing for all students.
Reducing the Use of Plastic Bottles. We will decrease the potential number of plastic bottles in landfills and oceans and help protect ocean animals. We will do our part in helping to reduce the amount of petroleum we use to make, fill, and transport the bottles and, in effect, reduce the amount of carbon released in the air. We will practice responsibility.
Believe me, they've helped me through this entire thing.
Oceans make up.
There we go. Thank you, Stephen.
Oceans feed us and sustain us. Most of the oxygen in our atmosphere is generated by the sea. Oceans drive our climate and weather. Our very lives depend on the ocean. Yet we're poisoning the ocean with hundreds of millions of tons of plastic. Over 2 million plastic beverage bottles are used every five minutes in the United States, but as little as 10% are recycled. The rest end up as trash in landfills or in our oceans. As a direct result of this, there's a floating garbage patch twice the size of Texas in the North Pacific. All this trash directly affects ocean life. 100 million marine mammals and turtles in the North Pacific are killed every year by plastic in the ocean. 70% to 100% of North Pacific seabirds are affected by eating plastic. Many birds starve death because they eat too much plastic trash. Plastic fragments concentrate pollutants up to 1 million times the ambient levels in seawater, in effect, turning ingested plastic into poison pills. So what? Think the ocean isn't important? Imagine Earth without it. Plastic is killing the ocean. It's poisoning the fish you eat. The fish you eat have likely ingested contaminated plastic. As a result, you are indirectly ingesting contaminated plastic. Nature can no longer produce organic fish in the ocean. What can you do? Stop using plastic beverage bottles. 8.8 billion gallons of bottled water were consumed in the U.S. in 2007. That's 232 16-ounce bottles per person a year. Now remember, only a small fraction are actually recycled. So up to 63.4 billion plastic bottles end up in landfills and the ocean in a year. That's nearly 174 million bottles every day, over 120,000 every minute. That's about 300,000 bottles and endless trash in the time it would take you to watch this video. So the challenge is, use reusable water bottles filled with filtered tap water. If each person in the U.S. replaced their disposable plastic water bottles with a reusable container filled with tap water, we'd keep billions of plastic water bottles out of the ocean. It's easy to do, it will help save the ocean, and it will save you money.
Water, a natural resource, has become a commodity. Let's be responsible at Freeman Kennedy.
Good job, guys.
Thank you very much for that presentation.
I just wanted to share with the committee, first of all, I'm very proud of the girls for taking on an issue that's significant and impacts the daily life of students at Freeman Kennedy and also significant impact on our world and environment. They did a lot of work in terms of researching their proposal and are recommending the installation of the water filling station. They have looked at price-cost for that, and it looks like the cost to install the refillable water station will be between $400 and $600. So I would like to suggest that the committee support that recommendation and that we move forward to looking into it.
Could I have a motion?
So moved. I think it's a great idea.
Is there a second?
Second.
I just had a question.
Yeah.
With the station, I don't know, probably directed to the research of people here, is it only one bottle at one time that can be filled, or multiple bottles? Or is that possible, something we can?
What I see is one.
You have to go to the mic, Stephanie. Sorry.
Sorry.
Right. What I see is one bottle at a time.
Okay. I didn't know if in our research we can maybe do multiple, just thinking it's more likely to be used if, instead of creating a line, if multiple people can be using it. I don't know if that's even possible, though.
Well, there are two water fountains, a higher one and a lower one in the cafeteria. So I guess we could look at, but there's not a lot of room for too many kids at once.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. That's an excellent idea.
Is this one of the stations that actually fits on the back?
Yeah.
And retrofits right on the back, and then you just put the bottle right there, it has a sensor and fills?
Yeah.
As I say, I know like the Y has those and?
Right. Exactly. And a lot of universities.
That's a great idea.
So I think, you know, if we can fit, you know, I think if we can fit two, if it looks like it works for two, I think it would be even better, because?
Yeah.
Well, obviously, yeah. But that's.
But that would see no current usage of it and would kind of go along with it, so that would even make the more sense, so.
Okay. Good. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's unanimous.
Great.
And Mr. Flaherty, you voted yes, so congratulations.
What did I vote yes for?
Don't worry about it.
Coming in late.
Thank you, girls, very much for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Excellent job.
I'd like to let you get home and get your mark on.
Mark walks in, the crowd leaves.
Yeah. Figures.
Killed the party.
Yeah, no kidding.
I'm always a party killer. Sorry about being late, guys. I had a little conflict with work.
There it is. Okay. We don't want to hear it.
Ah, you got a haircut.
You like that? I'm actually beating you on you. All right. Next, we have a retiree.
Lucky you.
Ann Peasey has been with the Norfolk Schools for 35 years?
32.
32? Oh, okay. This is my note might be a little bit off, then. So, and we just wanted to thank her on behalf of the school committee, present you with a little gift. Thank you for all of your hard work, for all you've done. You'll be sorely messed. I've, all the teachers I've talked to, including the principal, have been, you know, commiserating about the fact that you're leaving and that they don't want you to leave and that you can't be replaced and all these horrible, horrible things that, you know, the school's going to fall apart, you know, next year with you being gone, but, you know, but you do have some reach back in the school somewhere. There might be a relative or two, you know, floating around, so, you know. I was talking to Mark yesterday, so.
I think he's pretty.
My mom?
Yes, your mom.
Oh, I, yeah. Mark might be happy that mom.
So, we just wanted to thank you, just a little token of our appreciation on behalf of the school committee.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Very deep. Thank you. And now ladies and gentlemen. (applause). I'm going to go home. I'm going to design.
There you go.
Four days.
Wow.
And the Bruins are on tonight, so that might, that might have something to do with it, too.
Doesn't correspond at all.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, and good night.
All right. If you look at Exhibit 3, we have the superintendent evaluation. These are the benchmark goals. This is what the evaluation committee basically came up with. And so hopefully, you know, all have had a chance to kind of, you know, you know, read through this and, you know, Dr. Allardy's been talking about this, you know, throughout and everything like that, so, you know, this is regarding her goals. We don't really need to vote on your goals, per se, but we just need to vote on.
Vote on the form itself, correct?
Well, no, what we need to vote on is just that the fact that she's, that she's met her incentives that were built into her contract.
Oh, right. I got it. No.
So, there's.
And I'm happy to summarize, I mean, I did put it in writing, but I'm happy to walk through or answer any questions in terms of the status of the goals to date, and then I have some additional information for you for the evaluation process.
Okay. So first, could I get a motion to provide, to provide Ingrid, or Dr. Allardy, with her incentive goal for the 2012, 2013 school year?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now we'll do discussion. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Allardy here regarding her goals? I mean, it's, it's, not to say anything about any past superintendents or administration that we've had in schools, it's been a, for, I don't know about for the rest of you guys that have been around for a while, it's been a breath of fresh air. I mean, Dr. Allardy has come in and taken the bull by the horns and has really made a lot of positive impact changes. It's been a, it's been a tough year changing over with the new, you know, with the new Common Core coming in, as well as with the new teacher evaluation systems, and she's done it with grace and hard work, and things have moved extremely smoothly. I've, you know, it's my fourth year on the committee, and it's by far been the most efficient year that I've seen thus far, and I'm, in speaking to the teachers and the other administrators at, both at Freeman and at HOD, it has been a phenomenal experience for them, and they're very, very, very enthusiastic about what she's done in her performance. So, I don't know if anyone else had anything to share and/or questions.
I'll jump in there. I had more of a, more of a comment than a question. You know, it's, first of all, it's hard to believe it's been almost a year.
I can't believe it's, it's June.
What a difference a year makes. I mean, we're certainly happy here. I know I am speaking personally as a community member, but also a school committee member to thank you for all the hard work and efforts that you put into setting up an evaluation and following through with the action plan. I think it's absolutely phenomenal, and the best thing about the first year, at least in my opinion, is that we have a building block and a structure that we can build upon for the years to come, so please don't go anywhere because you're part of that plan. So, that's my comments. Thank you.
Mark?
Well, I also want to say, working with Ingrid on the policy subcommittee meeting is, I mean, she's got so much insight, you know. I'm relatively new to the school committee. It's my first year, just finished up my first year. Can't believe it's been a year already.
Don't remind me.
But, you know, Ingrid has a lot of information. She listens to my opinions, may not always agree with me, you know, but she listens and we get things done, and it's a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
You were me.
Yeah? I'll go. You want to go?
I'll go. I'm sitting. Um, semi-echoing things, I have to say the biggest change that I've seen, very much the positive, in just speaking with various teachers, is just the general tone and tenor of the district itself is much, much more positive, and again, that's not a slight at anyone else, it's more of a statement of how impactful you have been thus far, so I think we definitely made a right decision as far as hiring you, and to echo Kelly's sentiments, you can't really go anywhere, so there you go. You're here for 10 years.
I had an opportunity to talk to both teachers as well as administration, and in comparison to what was here versus what is here now, it's a vast difference. So it's nice to hear a lot of positive feedback from people of both tenors, and I look forward to actually continuing. I thank you for what you've done so far.
Thank you.
Okay, this is going to be a tough vote, but all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
There you go. Congratulations. After that report, she's going to ask for a raise.
I did want to just add one other thing. No, it's not about that. No, not about that. I just wanted to say, we talked about as part of the evaluation cycle doing a mid-year, mid-cycle performance review, which would be around July, August, would be the midpoint, and we developed that form. So to support with that, I did put together a binder with just backup info. You chose standards for me to focus on this year, so I have a binder that just has some backup information on what was done under each of those standards to help you with that, and I only did one, so I can have it copied if you want, or if you just want to circulate it as you, I believe process-wise, you have to give your feedback to Sean, and then he compiles one written.
I think it was interned.
Yeah. Is it in digital format at all?
I can scan some of it.
The only reason I asked it is that way we don't have to look at it separately, we could all look at it at the same time. That's if you want to have access to it. Well, it's, yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be just a pure digital for, I mean, it's not going to be a fillable format anyways.
Oh, the template for the actual document that we're drafting, that we can send electronically, and you can put your feedback in and then send it to Sean to compile, but the evidence binder, I can, I can scan it and put it in if it sees here, or however people want to view it, is fine.
Right, exactly. So the response would definitely be easier in electronic format, but either or on this.
I can respond electronically, but I'm still old-fashioned.
From the phone?
I like to read paper copies.
All right. I'll have that for you, and then you can, you know, get your feedback to me.
Okay, good. All right, thanks. Number six, the MASSE joint conference is again this year in November, November 6th through 9th, I believe. November 6th through 9th.
Yep.
I know Jeff went last year. I wasn't sure if anyone wanted to go this year. It's $275 per registration plus room, and the room is 107 per night.
I'm certainly interested in going back. Last year was, was a great opportunity, so I know Kelly had some interest last year.
Good conference.
Yes, and I would like to go as well, or at least for part of the time, so I don't know, you know, November's so far away is, you know, part of the problem on scheduling and everything like that. So I know, especially for Kelly who travels, it's very difficult. Do you want to just say that we'll, you know, put in for two reservations and then we'll?
Can you cancel one? If it end up being the case where, isn't this not, if I read this right, you can't?
I don't think you can.
Because, yeah, I think there's a cancellation thing on this. I think you're obligated to two if you say two, right?
If you do, the special registration rate is non-refundable.
Right. But I mean, if we're only doing two, I'm pretty, I mean, last year I couldn't go because of the presidential election, but.
And there's no way to share these registrations?
Well, that's what I'm thinking we probably could.
Yeah, that's the thing, is if you just did one.
You get a name badge, correct? I mean, I shouldn't be saying this on public records, but it's pretty common to get a badge.
It doesn't say you can't do that.
No.
Jeffrey Chalmers for a day. Right. Sorry.
Yeah. Stand in line. Last year, they had a number of people.
Very short line.
They had, they had a bunch of different sessions. This one, this year is condensed.
Right.
So instead of having to, you know, go to one and go to another, now you actually have one you can go to and, you know, the next one starts, and the next one, it's a much better format.
Yeah, because I mean, there's, Wednesday, someone goes Thursday.
I might be able to go for a short time, but I couldn't afford to go all three days because I don't.
Right.
So why don't, maybe I propose that we go for two registrations and?
Share them.
And share them, if at all practical?
Yeah. I think that sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll take that as a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're fine for money in the school budget from that standpoint. Okay, HOD playground bids. We got how many bids in today? Three?
We got three bids, and I just copied the overview for you. We couldn't have it in your packet in advance because the bid's closed today at noon, so we opened them today. We had hired Kyle Zick, landscape, he's a landscape architect, to put together the bid specs, and so he was here today with Todd and I. We opened the bids, and then Kyle stayed to evaluate each of the bids. At this point, we have two bids that are really in competition. The way the public bid process works and the language in our RFP is that it'll be awarded to the lowest, lowest reasonable bidder that meets all the criteria. So on first glance, it looks like ProBilt comes in as the lowest on the base bid at $169,000. The base bid includes all the landscape work that needs to be done. It includes the fencing, the paving of the walkway around the perimeter of the playground, and the preparation of the field area, surfacing and sod, seed, actually, in the base bid for that area. The playground equipment is being handled separately, that was not included in the bid. So this is just the site work, the fencing, the paved walkway. Both are pretty consistent with what we had budgeted for that amount, based on the initial work we had done, so they both seem to be within the range. Alternate one, which you see, was to replace the seating on the field with actual sod, and that's, that's something we really wanted to consider, given the timing of when the field is going in. So alternate one, ProBilt came in at $1,500, Tasco Construction at $7,500 for that, and Merini at $8,000. Alternate two is the surfacing. So once all the equipment's installed, we wanted to go with a system called Smarty System, which is, it's not, it's sort of like a foam rubber surfacing that is much stronger, much more durable to the winter conditions. The ProBilt priced that at $108, Tasco Construction at $75, Merini at $168. So where we are at this point is, we're in the process of doing the reference checks on the bidders. Merini has been excluded because their bid's significantly higher than the other two. So ProBilt and Tasco, we're in the process of reference checking. Kyle started that today. We also have to determine if we're going to accept each alternate, because the lowest bidder will be based on the base bid plus the accepted alternates. So if we decide we want to have the bidder do both the, both the sod and we want them to do the surfacing, we would have to include those two prices in the final bid price. What we're also checking right now is because there's a pretty big discrepancy between Tasco and ProBilt on the Smarty System surfacing quote, Kyle's following up with both the vendors to make sure they were quoting on that actual material and that their bids consistent with the specs that were in, in the RFP. We want to make sure that Tasco, because they're so much lower, didn't replace that and think about putting poured concrete. We want to make sure the bids meet the specs. So that's what he's doing. We should have all that information back by tomorrow, so what I would like to suggest is that the committee vote to give me the authority to award the bid to the lowest bidder inconsistent with the RFP pending reference checks and, to make sure that, again, that their bid meets all the specifications outlined.
Couple of questions. What's, what's in the base bid again?
The base bid is, they have to do, we're using prison labor on June 22nd to do the demolition of the current playground, so all the equipment's gone, will be gone. The base bid, they have to, they're going to be removing some trees, they have to dig up the surfacing, they have to remove all the concrete footings that are left, they have to bring in gravel and then loam and seed the field, put in an irrigation system to bring in gravel, and then loam, and seed the field, put in an irrigation system in that. Then they'll be fencing around the perimeter of the playground. And then there's also going to be a paved walkway that goes around both. So based on the initial research we did, we estimated that work coming in at around $1.60. So both the bids are pretty close to that.
And is that, is that work part of the requirement? I mean...
It's part of what we proposed in the playground project, project that CPC approved the funding for.
What do we, I don't, I don't remember the, what the surfacing came in at, on our budget.
Almost $100,000.
Okay, that's, I thought it was a hundred.
So all the bids were really very, Tascow and ProBilt were very consistent.
I mean, yeah, sorry, number two.
Alter number two, okay.
Yeah. Where we are hypothesizing that the reason that Tascow might be lower on the surfacing is that three vendors called the rep for Smarty System for quotes, to put together their quotes. And she told us today that they, that she gave two quotes to the people. One would include their company installing, and the other was for just the materials with supervisory, with having them supervise the installation and the company doing the work. So we think Tascow probably took the second quote, and they're planning to do the installation themselves, which is fine. It's a very basic system, as long as there's supervision. But we want to make sure that that's accurate, and that, and that they are quoting on the accurate, on the surfacing that we're looking to put in.
And, and if we didn't go with the surfacing, what would be the other option if we didn't move forward with that?
Then we would have to, we would have to, if we don't award the surfacing to one of the two contractors, then we'll have to purchase it separately and have the install. If we, it would be pulled, we're still using that surfacing, we'd just have to pull it out of the bid and bid it separately. We have, they are on the state contract, and we have priced that out. It's not a significant savings for us to do it.
Okay, so we have to do it?
We have to do the surfacing, yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Why, why is it an alternate then?
Well, we weren't sure, when we put the bid in the RFP out, Smarty Systems, who is the vendor we want to use for the surfacing, wasn't on the state bid list, which means we would have had to get three quotes on that, that portion separately, because it's coming in at $100,000. Since then, they've, they have been approved to be on the state bid list. So we could purchase that without going through a separate RFP for surfacing. So we put it as an alternate because we weren't sure where that was going to come in.
Okay, so it was designed to make sure that we could go to Smarty Systems?
Yes. Yep, because we wanted to use that. And we didn't want to, if they weren't on the state bid list, we would have had to bid the playground project, then we would have had to put it out of separate RFP for surfacing and get three quotes on that. So we included it in the bid to protect ourselves in that situation.
And what is Smarty Systems? Is that a company or is that a product?
It's a product.
Okay.
They have a contract now with PlayWorld, PlayWorld Altisystems, I think is what it's called.
And it's, you know, like, you know, the foam poured in place?
Yeah.
Yep.
This is kind of a more comprehensive version of that.
Yeah.
What's nice about, as opposed to the foam poured in place, it doesn't freeze. And it also has a longer warranty on its elasticity, which is, you know, the, from, from a fall height standpoint, you know, when, if a child falls and gets injured, you know, the lawyers, first thing they're going to do is measure the impact re-biz, you know, resistance of the, of the flooring.
And the poured in place, they're having difficulty with in some places because of the freezing, cracking, it's more porous, people, you know, walking in heels, things like that. This is a much more denser, more durable rubber.
Now, this is a system they just put in, they did the whole, where Ann originally found it was at the, at Bethesda, at the new military, at the military hospital, you know, that took over where they, when they tore down Walter Reed, and they made the big one at Bethesda. They have a huge playground for the children, you know, whose fathers are, you know, fathers and mothers are in the hospital. And they use this system there. So, and also, this system was first put in place in a park in Staten Island, and it actually survived the hurricane when it came, it was, it was completely submerged like six feet, eight feet underwater, you know, all sorts of debris on it and everything like that. And when the water receded and they brushed it off, the system was still in place and working fine, and still had the attenuation and, you know, the impact resistance and everything. So that was, so those were the sort of things that, you know...
Yeah, we looked at when we were putting together the specs for the project.
I know it's a minor amount, but I think that sod price, going back to my landscaping day, that's low.
It's very low.
That's impossible.
Yeah, we, I'm not sure where, but that is the price.
Follow-up question. I mean, I think the, just a, if I had, looking at the area, that's not unreasonable, the, the second one there. That first one is low.
Yeah, we noted that too, and Kyle's got a follow-up with that as well.
Here's the other question. What happens if we approve one of them, and then they go, end up going over this estimate?
It's part of the bid that they've secured a price that they're going to complete the project for that.
Okay, so regardless of what it actually costs, and this is what we...
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll just have them do the sod.
And you said there is an irrigation system going in, so you don't have to worry about whether it's grass or anything.
The only, the only other piece that we held out of the bid was the well. We have to bid that out separately. It's estimated about $12,000 to $14,000. And we kept that purposely out of this bid, because we're considering pairing with Gums Farm, because they're doing a well, and that we might get a better deal bidding those two together. So that's not included in the site work.
We couldn't hook it up to, to town water?
The expensive.
Instead of drilling a, a well.
It'll be a well. We, I mean, we, when we put together the whole playground plan, we did get quotes, so we had a ballpark for what it was. And it was $12,000 to $14,000. But again, Gums Farm's putting in a well at the same time. And so we discussed not including that in the general contract and then looking at that. Yeah, getting that together.
And the other nice thing about a well is you don't have the water band issue.
True. Plus, you don't know what water rates are going to be in five years, or is the well it's locked in, you don't have to worry about anything. So, yeah, I think well makes more sense. That sounds good.
So is, is there a motion to allow Ingrid to award this based, based upon due diligence?
So moved.
To either Tascow or ProBilt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to you.
All right. We have a whole bunch of things. Let's see. You know what, actually, my, if you don't mind, I'd like to jump around on the agenda. The item number three for me tonight, I would like to recommend that the committee appoint Dr. Anna Tupper. She is serving in the capacity of acting special education director currently. She's done an outstanding job this year, has built great relationships with families, done a lot of work with professional development, supporting staff. I would like to recommend the committee appoint Dr. Tupper. It would have to be pending licensure. Her licensure for the director of special education position is pending with the Department of Ed, because she has to take the mass communication skills and literacy test. She's completed all of the licensure requirements, but wasn't aware that for any new administrative license, that's a new requirement, that people have to take that. She's scheduled to take it July 13th. So I'd like to recommend the committee appoint her pending licensure, but I know you'd like probably the opportunity to interview her publicly. So if that's okay with you, I'd like to do that first, so that we can let Anna not sit through all the budget discussions. She's done that plenty of times with me already.
We want, we want her to share our pain.
So is it okay with the committee for, for, and do that first? Okay, then I'm going to let Anna have my seat, because she needs to speak into a microphone. So.
Hello.
How are you? Thank you for having me tonight.
Thanks for coming. We, we each have one question, so it won't be too, too daunting.
Okay.
Well, that's, yeah. So I guess I'll, I'll start. What qualities and characteristics do you think are most critical for special education director, and how has your professional experience prepared you for this position?
Okay. Well, I think that there are some really key elements to be a special education director. I think the first is that you really need to have child-centered decision-making. I think that's the primary characteristic of a special education director. I also feel that you really need to have excellent communication. I think it's really important to have very good communication. And I think even within the realm of communication, I think the two areas that you really need to focus on are having, being able to listen to people, to really hear what people have to say, and also to be transparent in the way you communicate. I feel that you really have to have a collaborative approach to decision-making. I think that's key. And I just think that you have to have a caring persona. You have to have leadership skills. You need to be able to motivate staff. Just in terms of different experiences that have, that I've had professionally, I think even prior to my professional experiences, just having grown up in a home where my father was director of special education for about 35, in, in education as an administrator for 35-plus years. And I was just around, you know, a lot of different situations that, you know, created a lot of empathy for me and a lot of development. And then, you know, I have an undergraduate degree from a state college, from Bridgewater State College. I've got a doctoral degree from Boston College in administration, special education, and curriculum. I actually graduated with distinction. So that was, you know, it was a great, Boston College was a great experience. I worked for the Brockton Public Schools for 15 years. I was a resource teacher for 10 years, and I, I was an assistant principal for about five years. So it was great, just a great experience. I think all of those experiences have really helped me, you know, to be where I'm at. I was team chairperson in Norfolk for six years. So I think that those have all mattered, yeah.
You have a lot of little people in the back of your minivan, so.
Exactly. And I have a lot of people in the back of my minivan, and I'm very ready for a new car. So.
I noticed I got backed into it.
Backed into my son's truck.
Oh, no.
I know. I was rushing out to take the girls to basketball practice, and, oh, you know, it's always one of those things. So you didn't park in the right spot.
There you go, there.
Yeah, yeah, no, it really wasn't. It was really my fault. I will take full responsibility for that one.
My wife and I take turns of hitting each other's car in the driveway.
Exactly, exactly.
We're good at it, too.
William's ran me over tonight?
Yeah.
All right, Thomas?
How would you balance the need for fiscal responsibility with the charge of providing high-quality, child-centered learning programs for children with a variety of special educational needs?
So I think the gist of, you know, trying to get to the answer to that question is really just providing really strong programming in district. Really having, I think we've had an opportunity this year to hire some new staff, and I, I'm really pleased with the hires. So really being able to, you know, bring on really strong staff members, to look for professional development for our own staff, to really strengthen our internal programs. And, you know, we've also tried to undertake a lot of responsibility this year for programming, I think that has saved us money. For example, we've undertaken home service programming. So, you know, we've hired a BCBA slash resource teacher who's outstanding this year. Together collaboratively, we've been able to approach home programming for students, and we've saved a significant amount of money as a result. But I truly feel like the answer to that question is really providing strong programming for our students here in Norfolk.
Thank you.
I was given a very long question.
Oh, gee, and I don't have my glasses.
It's, it's too many words for me to put out there at one time, so I may just kind of split it up into a couple parts.
Okay, I have them in front of me here? Okay, good.
I actually had a chance to review Dr. Allardyce's assessment of the special education department.
Okay.
And I wanted to focus on some of the greatest challenges you feel are affecting the department right now.
Okay.
And maybe if you can just identify some of them and, and, or what you think are some of the challenges, and possibly what you would like to see in terms of addressing those challenges.
Okay. I'd rather talk about the strengths of the programming, okay?
That's the easy part.
So, yeah, I know, I know. What are some of the challenges of the special education department? I think because Norfolk is a smaller community, I think that it's, it can be challenging at times to feel that you have a community when you have a special education student. So for example, if you went to a larger district, they have, there are more opportunities for programming. And so what we've really tried to do here in Norfolk is, you know, provide programming for students that, you know, meet a diverse learning population. So I think that can be challenging sometimes, and I also think it's challenging sometimes for parents and for families, you know, to feel like they're a part, you know, of, of, to feel like there's a community for them. So I think that's a challenge. But I really feel this year, we've really reached out to the Special Education Parent Advisory Council and tried to have a really nice working relation, a collaborative working relationship with them, and tried to embrace and extend their efforts, you know, to the general population. And we've really tried to look at trainings for parents this year and offer trainings through them. I feel that we've also really tried to establish a collaborative working relationship with Rentham and King Philip in Plainville, in order to try and look at the services that each of us provide, and try to take a look at programming, you know, amongst the three regions. So I think that that's been really helpful. I mean, I guess I see a lot of the answers to this question kind of in the framework, though, of strengths, because I feel like just trying to create those strong programs. For example, we've really tried to expand our preschool programming this year, and I think we've been really successful in that area. You know, really bringing on some strong staff members. We've got a great new preschool teacher who's been wonderful. We've got a BCBA. We hired a speech and language pathologist who's just knocks it out of the park. So I really feel like, you know, kind of getting back to the answer to my first question, just trying to really strengthen our programs here in district. And really, you know, trying to lead the staff and motivate them. I mean, I know everyone's familiar with the teacher evaluation system here, the new teacher evaluation system, but really helping people to be proficient, move to exemplary. I mean, that's really what I'm hoping that we can do with our staff, so that we can really provide strong programming here for the students. Did I answer?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And kind of like the follow-up question to that, and I think you've already touched on it, is, you know, if you could kind of design, seeing what limitations we have right now and strengths, obviously, and you could design a perfect department, what, what programs do you think you would add or like to see added?
Yeah.
Or supported better than there currently?
Well, I think one of my concerns is that, I think our speech and language community has been through a lot the past couple of years. And so as a result, you've been very generous. And, you know, we've provided, you know, additional speech and language pathologists for next year. You know, I, I, I just want to make sure that we get the right match. And we've really done some great interviewing. I think we've got somebody really strong that we, you know, considering for the position. Just making sure that the needs of our speech and language community are met at this point. I think that's a real, it's a real priority for me. I also feel that in terms of taking over home programming for students, I feel that I'd like to continue to do that, just making sure that, you know, our, our service provider is supported, you know, well-supported. So that's another area, I think, you know, that, those are, those are areas that I'd really like to continue to focus on and monitor and supervise.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Working with parents of a special needs student is often challenging and can sometimes be confrontational. Can you describe your process on how you deal with families, and what do you do to help manage their experiences, I'm sorry, expectations, as well as the process for establishing a trusting relationship between them and the Norfolk public school system?
Well, I think that, first of all, the process for special education is really team-oriented. And so really acknowledging that parents are a part of that team. I mean, that's, that's huge. Not a part of that team, they're really, you know, probably the most important part of, of that, that team. And so I want to go back to what I originally said in my first question, which was really approaching decision-making for children, always keeping the child in the forefront, and also having a collaborative decision-making process. I think if there are, you know, challenges, again, taking time to meet with parents, to listen to their concerns, to be respectful of all team members, and, you know, coming together at the team meeting format, and really trying to hear people, and trying to collaboratively problem solve. So I really feel like that's one of my strengths. And I also feel that, you know, collaborative, collaborative problem solving, I think is really crucial.
Okay.
Jeff?
All right.
Hi, Jeff.
How much time do I have?
I gave you the shortest question.
He did. But I have a question on top of the question. So I'm going to ask the question that was here, and I'm going to ask questions after that, if that's okay.
Well, we're trying to lim, like we said in our emails, that we're trying to limit that.
Right. But I have questions I'd like to have answered if I could. Okay, so how do you remain current with the latest trends in research in special education? And how do you share this professional knowledge with staff members?
Well, I think that one of the things that, I think I'm an educator at heart, okay? So I, I love to learn. I think that my degrees speak to that. So I love to learn and I think that my degrees speak to that. So just belonging to professional organizations, also networking with other special education directors has been a wonderful way to learn. One of my goals this year for staff was to have consistent and regular meetings and on the agenda for every meeting is an opportunity for us to grow and develop. And so one of the things we accomplished this year was we took a look at the IEP development and we, as a team throughout the entire year, really focused on looking at all elements of the IEP, trying to facilitate consistency with the presentation of the IEP so that when you receive your IEP, you know exactly what to expect. We've had a couple of presentations this year on IEP development for parents through CPAC at the beginning of the year. I also presented a workshop on the IEP and rights and responsibilities of parents. So really just, you know, giving articles to staff, discussing trends, you know, through that meeting format. So I've had weekly meetings with each building and I've had monthly meetings with the district and really trying to, you know, just really focus on growth and development for our staff. And also promoting professional development. I think I've, you know, really tried to facilitate that as well.
One of the major concerns that I've come across in talking with parents
Yeah.
is the IEP process.
Yeah.
Which I know personally, professionally, you've done a wonderful job with, because in speaking with a lot of parents
Yeah.
who have had a much different experience in the last year since you've been there in comparison to what's happened in the past.
Yeah.
And I know that you've created an amazing collaborative with the PAC groups and the parent groups.
Yeah.
Because in speaking with the PAC groups alone, they've told me that you've come in multiple times and had educational seminars and series.
Yeah.
Which I think is amazing and I applaud that.
Yeah, thank you.
So based on that, how do you think you could improve the current IEP process to make it even more transparent than what you're doing now?
Yeah, and I think that's a good question, Jeff. I just, as a part of the whole education evaluation system, I had an opportunity to meet with Mrs. Latvie, our team chairperson, and her goal this year, and my goal for her, was really to try and make the IEP process a little bit more, you know, user-friendly. And so what she has done as part of her goal is she provided a training for, you know, for the parents through CPAC, but also she's developed a survey and she has developed a letter which will be initiating in September as an introduction, you know, to the special education programs and the process here in district. And we're really also trying to facilitate, you know, a personal phone call. So a letter would come to parents identifying specifically the process. Hopefully, you know, a phone call will be made prior to your initial meeting, just going over any concerns that you have. And then also a survey at the end of the process, you know, just to try and get feedback from parents as to how things went, you know, ways to improve, what could, you know, what are you still uncertain of? But I really think a lot of it is communication, you know?
Education.
Yeah, education, communication, being transparent, being, having an open door policy, you know, having people feel comfortable to just pick up the phone and call.
Okay. And last question, real quick. Based off of you being there for the last six years
Yeah.
and having an interim position in the last year, what do you see as things you want to implement in the next one, three, and five years?
Yeah, so what's my vision for the department? Just really solid programming for our kids.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, really solid programming. And really looking at, like I said earlier, moving from proficient to exemplary for our staff, motivating, educating, professional development opportunities. Yeah, I think that that's key.
How many BCBAs do you have in the program right now?
Right now, we have one, Karamir Head. We do have several staff that have behavior background. One of our preschool teachers has very strong behavior background. Our new speech therapist has a very strong behavior background.
Now, the new hires have been amazing.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
That might be a stupid question.
Never.
What's ECB?
Board Certified Behavior Analyst.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyway, yeah, yeah.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to accept Ingrid's recommendation to appoint Dr. Anna Tupper as the Special Education Director?
Pending licensure.
Pending licensure?
So moved. Second.
Second. Any discussion? Do we work on the contract? Or do we work on the contract or is that an interim, is that a...
That I'll work on with her.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we...
Within the parameters of the budget that you approved, we'll be approving it tonight.
Do we then need to ratify that contract?
You will need to sign it.
Okay. So, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. You can go watch the programs.
Let me know how they're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Budget transfers.
Budget transfers. That's exhibit number five in your packet. We have a variety of areas where we're anticipating savings and would like to make some transfers out of those accounts. So the, in order to fund the HLL of day playground equipment purchase, so those are in, you know, in exhibit five, $10,000, coming from district leadership. We already awarded at your last meeting $29,000 for the social studies curriculum, so that will be an add to that line. Student services, as Anna talked about, she saved this year $50,000 in special education transportation costs by maintaining students within the district, so that money would be transferred. We have about $20,000 savings in, from heating in the Freeman Kennedy and the operations maintenance line, and about $10,000 in fixed costs. We had fewer retirement buybacks than we anticipated. We'd like to put all those funds into the budget line, $7,000 acquisition improvement replacement in fixed assets, which would fund the playground equipment. And again, we had a $35,000 savings in special ed out of district tuition.
Now, is this in addition to the $72,000 that we already had?
Mm-hmm.
Line item for the playground?
We had 20, yes. Yeah, we need to, we need to fund of the playground project 150-something thousand.
Okay.
So, yes.
So this will put us well over, I mean, we'll be roughly 180, 170?
Yeah, we'll have some, we'll have a little bit of contingency.
Little cushion, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there, is there a motion to accept the transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Always nice when you're moving money because you have it as opposed to...
Yeah, it's great.
In past years, we're like, all right, we have to move $7 here because we're out of money.
All right, the next thing that you have is to take a formal vote on the budget. The budget is as it was approved at town meeting and as presented at our last meeting. So I don't know if you want further discussion on the budget or you just want to vote to...
Sir, motion to accept the fiscal year 2014 budget?
So moved.
Second? Okay. Any discussion?
Between town and now, have you seen any changes or issues that you see coming up, other than...
Outside of what was approved in the budget?
Yeah.
No, the only situation that we're dealing with is, and I don't know what, is that we do have an additional kindergarten classroom. We will have an additional kindergarten classroom next year because of enrollment that was outside of the budget. However, because of the tuition, the tuition will fund that position. So I don't see a budget impact in terms of that.
What was the anticipated class and what was the actual class?
We're anticipating five.
Yes, we have 123 students that have enrolled in kindergarten. Last year, we had 96, so we are up by about 20, 25, 26 kids.
Wow.
Yep, so we had to add an additional classroom.
Yeah.
So we'll have five in the half-day.
Nice. Do we have adequate classroom space here?
Yep, we do.
Very good.
They're on, they're going to be on Brighty Lane for one of the classes. And Plainville voted to do the, well, Jeff knows.
They both went 8%.
Yeah, they voted for the 8%, so did Rentham. So that doesn't change anything in here, we don't get any money back, so. Any other discussion?
Sort of semi-related, but I know at the budget discussion, and I think at least, I think most of us at least attended a portion of it when they were presenting to the selectmen and then one of the selectmen, Jim Lea, made the point, it would be very helpful if the King Philip schools would do a lot more to involve us ahead of time.
Yes.
I would like to reiterate that point, because that was a fantastic point and that drives me crazy every single year, how they seem to just operate independently, walk in, claim the school's falling down despite the fact it's only a few years old and then it kind of falls on us. So this was nice to see this budget improve this year, so I don't know, whatever you can do on your end to sort of work with that process as we begin the budget process for next year, is to ensure that we have a good idea going into our process, what they're thinking ahead of time.
Yep.
That would be very helpful, because it sounded like he was kind of at the end of his rope as far as dealing with them.
Yeah, I think what the communities requested was that they put a budget study committee together with representatives from multiple towns, town departments, and school committees to develop a better long-range plan for KP. But I certainly can reach out to them earlier in the process to kind of...
Yeah, they could just be helpful.
Get that parameters for us.
You know, I'm not part of the process, but it seems somewhat haphazard in terms of how it would get put together and then last minute, like, oh my God, we need all this money and then it ended up putting us in a bind.
Then we had to go back and cut ours.
And I think we need to task our KP rep to be the nudge, to be the squeaky wheel and come
Already started.
and just go in there and be, all right, this isn't just, you know, and I think it gives you the perfect... This isn't just, this isn't me speaking.
Yeah.
The committee has told me that they want X, Y, and Z, so you're not the bad guy. You know, we're the bad guy, you're just, you know, 20%, you know, 20% of the bad guy. And so I think you can be a lot more abrasive, as it were, from the standpoint of like, listen, I agree with you guys 100%, but the other idiots, you know, this, this, and this.
I've already had a discussion with Jim Lea about that, about having a collaborative, regarding that. We have a new chairman on the school committee.
Yeah.
And the old chairman has actually moved up to the budget committee. So we've arranged some things to try and protect against things like that and, yeah, we are more aggressive when it comes to that, because you could see how volatile it was at that meeting, no one was happy. And I don't think they ever want to take that approach again and I had to sit down with the superintendent and she wants no part of having to deal with that again.
Yeah, but I think that's frustrating for, you know, for a lot of us that have been, especially been around for a few years. This wasn't the first time.
Yeah.
This has been, every year I've done this, we've had this same experience. I mean, I know this is your first year being on it.
Well, it was a wake-up call for me, because, you know, this is business world and educational world, two different worlds.
Right.
And I was completely frustrated with the way it was done.
Yeah, and as I say, and but, you know, for, you know, especially for Thomas and I, who've been on it the longest, I guess, it's been like this every single year, it's like all of a sudden at the last second, oh, surprise, we need 500%, you know, increase.
And I, you know, and I don't point blame, because as far as I'm concerned, that does no good.
Right.
A lot of state and federal issues to deal, go back and forth with, which are very frustrating in itself. So, no, hopefully next year, better planning on...
No, that's what I'm saying, I think it's our, you know, the committee as a whole is responsible to make sure we task you appropriately to, you know, bash some heads and make sure we get this thing, you know, squared away, you know, from the standpoint of our budget squared away months ahead of time. So there's no reason their budget, you know, which isn't substantially different than ours, shouldn't be able to be, they should be able to do the same basic strategic planning that we do, so.
One thing I would like to suggest, and I don't know if we can make this happen or not, is that, you know, pushing the school to give us advisory earlier in the process is one approach, and I think that we can certainly do that, but pulling the town into requesting an advisory preliminary budget sooner rather than later.
Right.
I don't know how the politics work with that, but can we put a motion in place or put it onto the whatever board?
The advisory board.
Requesting that they have a certain date where they get a preliminary budget.
Right, yeah, we can definitely. But, you know, part of the problem is, you know, is the, you know, like this past year, you know, KP did present a preliminary budget and it was so far
Oh.
out of whack and cra, I mean, I think, I think it was a 20% or 17%?
Something like that.
It was some outrageous number. 17? Yeah, it was a 17% increase. And so it was just like, why even bother? If you know there's no shot in the world, you know, why present a pie in the sky budget? And so I think that's the problem with saying, we'll ask it for early, and they're like, all right, fine, here you go. And I don't think they, it wasn't a serious process from the standpoint of they knew there was no possible way you could get a 17% budget out of towns in this economy. But that, that was what they threw forward and so then it became this used car salesman game of, well, you know, let me go talk to my manager almost, you know, throughout the process and then they came to, you know, 17, 15, 14, you know, and it's all the way down. And then it became the panicked, you know, we're cutting ban in all the sports programs.
Okay, clearly that, that approach wouldn't work then. Maybe I'll amend that by saying not necessarily a preliminary budget, but a preliminary assessment of, what do you call it?
Budgetary needs.
Budgetary needs above, you know, that they anticipate for the year. At least that way, the town will have a list of what the potential needs are, so if these things just come in all of a sudden.
Right.
Prior to, you know, as the budget goes from 17% down to 16.8%, then I don't know if there's anything we can do with that.
No, we can definitely direct, we can't direct the advisory board, but we can make our recommendation to the advisory board, you know, to do that, so.
Right. Figure out the wording on what that proposal would actually be, but, you know.
And the moderator appoints the advisory board, so I have it in there.
Okay, good for you.
If you're on our good side.
Well, as I say, I should say, I sometimes have it in there. So there was a motion on the table, all, any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Carrie's?
Okay, the next thing is exhibit number seven in your packet. One of the goals that I had this year was to do the entry report for you and to look at the strengths and challenges that the system faced, with the intent of proposing no more than three, three to four goals for the district moving forward for the next couple of years, that would form sort of the foundation for our strategic plan. So as part of the process, after all the data was collected, I did have several meetings with the full administrative team. In addition to a full day, we had an administrative retreat. We did what's called a SWOT analysis, so we took a look at all the strengths that came from the multiple data sources, we looked at the weaknesses, we looked at what we thought were opportunities for growth, and then we looked at what some of the threats that we'd be facing in the next few years were. So we did a comprehensive SWOT analysis. I actually attached that for you in the, in my evaluation packet, if you want to look at it. And from that, what we tried to do was to identify three main goal focuses, and what we tried to do in identifying our goals is really leverage areas of strength and address the biggest areas of weakness that we had moving forward. The feeling is that we really want to focus our energies for the next couple of years on a narrower number of goals. So if you're looking at issues in education, there's a million things we could talk about. We could talk about social competency, social skills programming, communication, parent involvement. We tried to look at what are strengths that we already have and leave those things intact and then look at where are our real gaps. And so I pushed the administrative team to take a look at all that data and to try to identify three goals that we thought would have the highest impact on student achievement and make the most difference in students' lives. So there's three that we're proposing and I just want to share the preliminary goals with you. The next phase, what we're working on is identifying all the strategies and action steps we would need to put in place in order to realize each goal, and I'd be sharing that back with you as well. But I wanted to get the committee's approval, really, of the first, of the preliminary goals before we go too far down that path. And as far as the strategies, what we're doing now is, once you approve the goals, we'll finalize the strategies. And then we're also looking at, with each action step, how many, what are the resource requirements for that? What are the professional development needs for our teachers to be able to enact that? And we're going to really work on pacing things so that the change is successful and manageable. So the three goals that we focused on, and I think the administrative team was really very happy with the goals that we ended with, because they do interrelate, but they're each independent. each independent. So we do have, as we've talked about throughout the year, we have some significant gaps in curriculum. We don't have a formal written curriculum for each subject area. So the first goal is to ensure high achievement and outcomes for all through engaging students in a rigorous, coherent curriculum that fosters the development of 21st century skills. So under that goal, we really want to strengthen the curriculum so that we have a very clearly defined written curriculum, K-6. And embedded in that goal, we really want to enrich our curriculum to target more of those 21st century skills of collaboration, creativity, active problem solving. So it's not just writing the curriculum, it's also strengthening the curriculum and really addressing some of those more critical thinking skills that aren't embedded in all our subject areas. So the first goal is a curriculum goal. The second goal is really to promote educator excellence characterized by high-quality instruction, implementation of best practices, and professional collaboration. So with that goal, what we really looked at is, we have a veteran teaching staff. We only have a small number of new teachers, but we have a lot of new curriculum initiatives in place. And in order to really effectively implement those, we have to really pay careful attention to the professional development programming and planning for teachers if we want to support those being successful. Feedback from teachers is that professional development over the last several years has been really inconsistent, spotty. There haven't been a lot of, there hasn't been a lot of follow-through. The professional development budget's been cut. So we, as a team, felt if we really want to create change, we want to strengthen the curriculum, we have to have a long-term professional development plan. And that has to be focused on supporting the initiatives we have. So ones, again, one's in curriculum, one's in professional development. And then the third goal, which I think is really critical too, is to have a coherent, cohesive assessment plan with clear proficiency benchmarks for every subject area that allows teachers to have the data they needed to really differentiate instructions. So what I mean by that is that, once we articulate the curriculum and we say, okay, this is what, we need to define expectations for, what reading level should we see for a kid in mid-year in first grade? How are we measuring that? What's on task? What's below? What, you know, what defines kids as at risk? And we need benchmarks for every subject area, for math, for English language arts, for social studies, and for science. So we have to identify the assessment tools. And once we've identified the assessment, we have to define what proficiency means so that we know, okay, so if a child is evaluated and they're exceeding grade level, then we should be designing the curriculum and challenging that child, moving them forward. If a child's not meeting benchmarks, we need to have things in place to provide remediation immediately. But before we can get to the tiered instruction piece, we have to define the tools we're using to measure proficiency and what the standard should be. So those are the three goals that we are proposing that we really focus on for the next couple of years. The feedback that we got from parents, communication really is pretty strong in the district. Actually, some people feel that they're inundated with communication because of Connect Ed. So that's something that we felt we'll clearly continue to work on, but we didn't make it a goal focus because the data shows right now that it's pretty strong. The, we have a really solid social skills curriculum, bullying prevention program. So we really felt we have all those things in place. And the real gaps are in professional development for educators and in the curriculum and assessment areas. So those are the goals I'd propose. I would like, you know, feedback from the committee. And, you know, if you approve those goals, we'll move forward to developing the strategy plan, which I'd like to have in place for you before we start the next school year.
Just a question. Are there any other objectives that didn't make the list that were discussed?
We did talk about social culture and school climate. And then, again, when we really looked at the data, we felt that we have a really solid foundation that we can continue to grow without it being a goal focus. We did talk about, we sort of, actually we merged too. We talked about the 21st century skills, the Park Assessment. And we decided to embed that piece into the curriculum goal because it seemed like it made logical sense. Family involvement and engagement, we looked at that. But we, again, felt that we have a lot of solid things in place. And there's a lot of restrictions because of the school security and things that are going on community-wise that limit that. But again, we can't address everything, so we tried to think about what is going to have the biggest return for our kids at this time. And we left things that we thought were pretty strong. And it doesn't mean that we won't continue those efforts. It just means that we're going to really funnel our resources and energies in a different direction.
Any other questions?
I just, the only one I had was on the first one, as far as, you know, developing a coherent curriculum fosters to the 21st century. Should we also put in something about aligning with KP from the standpoint, I know that's been--
Vertical articulation?
Yeah, from a standpoint of, you know, I think that's been a problem, not district-wide, but, you know, the three different, community-wide. I mean, from a standpoint of, you know, Plan Bill's doing one thing, Rantham's doing another, we're doing another, and they're all coming into KP in a bit of a jumbled mess.
Yep.
And I think if we make that as a focus, you know, of ourselves, but also reach out, you know, I know you and I've talked about doing a sit-down with the other, you know, other districts of, you know, having some group, you know, school committee meetings where we can all kind of--
Work together.
Work together and have a common focus. You know, since a majority of our children are ending up in that one school, it would make sense if, you know, it's great if we're aligned and we're great and everything like that, but if they're entering in the classroom and--
The expectations are different, yeah.
The expectations are different, or the, you know, the other kids are completely behind, the teacher's going to have to teach and bring those people up. And our kids are going to get lost in the shuffle.
Yep. What I would suggest with that, and I think that's an excellent point, is that we incorporate the alignment with KP and the vertical articulation of a K-12 curriculum as an action step.
Okay.
And the only reason for that is that I tried to keep the goals, things that we have complete control over. And that's going to rely on partnerships. So I'd rather see that as an action step because--
Okay.
If that's comfortable. But it definitely should be included in the plan because you're right, if we're not preparing kids equally and we're not thinking about the expectations of the receiving school, then we're at a disadvantage.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's part, I mean, it filters into the strategic objective.
Absolutely.
It's more of a tactical, or what do you call it? Is that what you're--
It'd be a strategy and an action step, yeah. And I gave you just a sampling, just so you'd see what we were doing in terms of the strategies.
Vertical articulation?
Vertical?
I'm still trying to puzzle that one.
I'm sorry.
That makes absolutely no sense given what he just asked. I understand what you--
Vertical articulation, meaning that the curriculum goes, you know, logical progress year after year.
Oh, essentially, no, I use it tonight. He's going to be like--
I mean, who thinks this stuff up? There's someone just sitting there--
He's going to be like, what are you talking about?
Educated on garden, I apologize.
We spend a lot of stuff on--
Communicate without buzzwords. Now it's possible.
We worked on vertical articulation this evening, honey. You're going to be so impressed.
Tom, you got to remember, they got to limit this stuff. I mean, everything's got to be Texas, got to be--
Oh, all right, I'll change it. Logical progression.
Oh, you're talking about vertical--
Ah, that's--
Now I get it, all right.
Vertart and vertant. Okay, we don't need to approve this, do we?
I'd like the committee to just approve the specific goals.
Is there a motion to approve the strategic objectives, goals?
So vertically?
Vertically.
Vertically. I vertically move it.
Okay. Anyone horizontally second it?
I'm not even touching that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. All right.
See, you put--
Don't take them on.
You put us in a room and you turn on the heat evidently, we get a little punchy.
There you go.
Next time.
Okay, I have three other things. The bullying report is quick. I have to do the quarterly bullying report. There were no instances of bullying reported last quarter at either school. Their only instance was, I reported to you at an earlier report. It was in the fall. It was at Freeman Kennedy, and it was addressed by administration. Okay. Fee collection software, this is just an informational item for you. We have been working really hard at collecting the unpaid, I shouldn't say we, Pam and Donna have been working really, really hard. I've had nothing to do with it, but at collecting passing fees.
It's the royal week.
I have an update for you of what's currently outstanding. We have, when we began, $99,780,000 in outstanding fees. We have collected $82,000 of that since the adoption of the new policy. So that's huge, significant. We still have about $17,563 outstanding in tuition fees. Okay? And then you can see below the breakdown of how, where those outstanding balances are. All right?
What's KP balance?
Pre-K. Oh.
Oh, no.
Oh, kindergarten balance.
Oh, okay. So you just threw the P in there?
Kindergarten program.
I don't know.
Okay. Kindergarten balance, pre-K balance, and, so that's sort of the breakdown. So we still have $17,000 outstanding. So I just wanted to mention to the committee, you know, again, we have, Pam and Donna have collected almost quite a bit of money, about 60,000, what, $70,000?
Forty.
$80,000?
Eighty thousand.
So they've collected a lot of money, but it's been, I mean, hundreds of hours of letter-writing, collection calls, second letters, tracking. It's been cumbersome. What we looked at was, we currently use a company called MCC for our online bill payment. That's how people can go in, pay their tuition payments. I had asked Adam Steiner, our technology director, to take a look at what other vendors were out there and what other services different programs would offer. Because I'm assuming that there's other, there's other programs that would have a richer collection side to them. So we did that. We looked at four different programs. There was only one at this point that really looked like it might meet the needs of the district. It would really not be ready for us to adopt for this year. But I just want to talk to you about it so I can explore it further. The program that we liked is called Fax Management. It is not inexpensive. It's a $40 fee per family to set up the account that we could not tack on to tuition. So the fee of adopt, the cost of adopting a program like Fax Management, we roughly estimated at about $9,600. Okay? But what Fax Management does is it sets up an online payment program for any tuition-based program you have. So KP, I'm saying KP now too, kindergarten, preschool, and SAC. You can set up the program. Rantham has adopted it recently. Many, many private schools use it. The difference between Fax and what MCC does is that it's an automatic deduction. So families have to log in, they set it up. They can choose when they want to pay their bill, their monthly bill. Fax Management, it's like a debit. They automatically withdraw that payment every month at that date that the family sets up. They have, right now, I think they said between 1% to 2% late fees. So they collect 98% of the tuitions because of that. Rantham has seen a huge decrease in non-payment because families make it a priority. If you know, not just that you have to pay your kindergarten tuition in January, you know it's coming out on the 15th. The reason I wouldn't suggest going with it right now is that it doesn't have the capacity for one-time bill payment. So we couldn't use it for our transportation fees and we couldn't use it for band fees. It's only for ongoing tuition kind of payments. While it's $9,000, that would be a cost the district would have to absorb because we get federal funds for the kindergarten grant, you can't build in any extra fees into tuition. That's part of the regulations. But I would think that it would be something the committee might want to consider because the cost of that, when you look at all the time and energy and effort that's gone in, we still have $17,000 uncollected. If you went with a program like Fax and they were actually able to collect 97% of the fees, which is what their data shows, that balance would, the $9,000 would more than cover what we're going to probably end up with uncollected this year.
And we can't build in a fee, but we can change the fee.
What do you mean?
We can't say it's $3,500 plus $40 for the thing, but we can say the fee for this year is $3,550.
You might get cited for that if you're added on your grant.
Yeah, because you can't, you'd be hiding in a charge there without telling them something.
But we changed the--
You vote the fee. But they explicitly say that you can't tack on any fees to the tuition, that the tuition has to exclusively fund teacher staffing and program materials.
Right.
So, yeah. But again, right now, we're, we have, you know, $17,500 still outstanding. The likelihood of us collecting that is, you know, we may get some of it back. We may recoup some of it, but we're not going to get all that money back.
Is this as of the 19th?
This is as of the 19th. And this is as of letters going out that told people that they can't enroll the child in the tuition-based program next year, withholding report cards. We've done everything we can.
Including bus and band, right?
Including bus, band, SAC. If you have a preschooler with an outstanding balance, you are notified they can't enroll in the full-day kindergarten until that's brought up, which is how we've gotten, you know, $82,000 back. But we're going to end with the balance. So, and again, if you adopt a program like Fax Management, they do all the collection. They send out the reminder notices. They withdraw the payment. If it's not there, they go again two weeks later. So it's just something to consider. I just want--
$40 per family or $40 per child?
Per family. No, it's basically 40 to set up the account per family. So if you have kids, and again, the district would absorb that cost. So to be, we wouldn't charge that to the families. It'd be about $9,600, I think. We currently pay $2,000 to MCC. So it's really a difference of about $7,000. But that's why I say I don't think we should do it next year because I can't cancel MCC. We still need that for band and bus. But down the road, it could really be worthwhile because it's $40 per account. So if you have a child in SAC and band and all those things, you have one account for the family. So you're not getting multiple communication. Fax is anticipating a point-of-sale feature next year so that they will be able to do the one-time fees. So I just wanted to make the committee aware of it since we've been having so many discussions about the bill collection and the difficulty, that it might be something we want to consider and look at more seriously next year.
I would be curious, sorry. I mean, we put a lot of emphasis on this this year, and obviously you've collected a great deal of money, so that's good. I would be curious, going into next year, with the additional knowledge or the full-year knowledge of, hey, you can't sign up for program X, Y, and Z.
Right.
What these numbers end up being. These numbers are going to be presumably a lot less next year than going forward.
We're hoping.
So I'd be curious with just the, with the process you have in place now, the management of that, what that results in a number. It's going to be infinitely less than it was--
Yeah, we're really hoping that.
So how do you know if you necessarily need to go to system or recommend it? I understand--
Yeah, we may not.
Your, I'll say man-hours in quotation marks, but that you're spending on collecting it. But I don't, I'm not the biggest fan of the $40 in theory, just because, I mean, they're spending thousands of dollars and now there's going to be another 40?
Except we would absorb the cost. I'm recommending if we did that.
Well, I mean, I guess we're still trying to work out a way potentially around that. I'm saying theoretically, if there was a way to work around it, ideally you would pass that on. That could open up yet another question or--
And I think we can track it for next year and see what the data looks like. I'm just suggesting that if we're at the end of next year, again, with a $17,000 balance, it might be cheaper for the district to pay $9,000 to Fax Management and more convenient for families because you don't have to worry about, you just go in the beginning of the year, you set up, you choose what date, and then you don't have to worry about payment again. It automatically comes out.
Do we have a tracked spreadsheet of, say, what the hours they've spent collecting on this? I mean, I'm sure, do we--
Oh, we could--
It'd be interesting as comparison sake.
Yep, we could definitely get that.
Like, over next year, it'd be nice if we have that, say, okay, we spent 200 hours or 100 hours, whatever the case is, and then we can definitely make a comparison.
Yep, we could do that. We can track the hours. We can look at the revenue. We can see how much of this we collect. And then when we get into the budget process next year, we can decide whether it makes sense to explore another vendor and--
Does that company charges, does the vendor charge any percentage on the money or is all the money they get just the $40 per family?
They charge the $40 per family.
And that's it, they're not taking like half a percent?
And that's how they get their revenue, right? We looked at so many different ones.
Now, the software implementation, is there any charge for the installation, licensing fees?
No, that's the total cost. Yeah, so.
And they don't pass on any of the, like, if I'm using a credit card?
And what about the fees associated with that?
The fees associated with a credit card, it's different by different vendors. I think they were, was, it depends on which card, 1.9%, I think.
It normally depends on the charge, you know, whether the type charges they take in case of a card.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but--
No, I'm saying the transaction fee, like, America Express charges a 4.5% transaction fee, or 3.5%, I think it is.
Which--
So in effect, we would lose some depending on how they want to pass that charge along, where they could get Discover Card, like 2% or something.
Or like in the town system, if you go through the clerk's office and you're using a credit card, up to $100, it's a $3.50 charge that just goes right back. You know, so if you're making a $100 charge, you get charged $103.50. The town still gets their flat $100. But, you know--
The vendor, I'm pretty sure with Fax Management, and I'd have to check it again, again, because we weren't anticipating it for next year. They, I believe that the primary source of payment they ask people to do is to a debit card or a checking account.
Okay.
And there's no charge for that. It's like an e-check. I believe they said it was either 1.9% or 2.9%. If you go in, in one month, say you know the payment's coming out the 15th and you don't have the money in the checking, you can go in and put in, use a credit card for that month. I think it's 2.9% and that's charged to the parent for that transaction.
Would we be in compliance by doing it? Because we can't, we can't pass on any costs. Can we pass on that?
That is, I think, within the regulations, yeah. Because that's, it's considered a convenience fee.
Yeah.
And there is no, for the parent, he's a credit card.
What's our existing, what's the existing finance software we use now?
MCC.
No, no, just in general. What I'm thinking of, the existing software we're using for the finance department, is there anything we can integrate in there that's available right now? Or are we just, are we using two separate systems?
Two separate systems.
Yep.
There's nothing in the--
This is the town's financing, county system.
To integrate with that? The, and Jeff, I use the town system in my office. You don't want to use the town system.
Yeah.
Because it's Unibank.
Yeah. We looked at that. We did look at the town system for, they use UltiGold, I believe.
Unigold.
Unigold.
Yeah, Unibank.
Yeah.
And it's horrendous.
And we looked at that, yeah, we did look at it, and they don't have, most of the other systems outside of FACS management, we looked at Altigold, we looked at, what does KP use, Donna, we looked at that one too. Do you remember?
It's registration-based.
Yeah, there's, but most of the other ones are very similar to MCC. They're just an online bill payment pay, and they all have the 2.9% for the credit card fee. E-checks for most are, you know, 25 cents, I think, with MCC. But none of the others outside of FACS had that automatic deduction and that sends email reminders. They handle the whole collection side.
So none of it merges?
It's the only other.
So you essentially have to set up a new, per family, you have to basically put it, type in the new information?
Nope, they will upload all of our data, based on our student, yes, yeah.
On their POS side, well, could we also run through lunches, you know, like, once a month? All of a sudden, you know, whatever your balance is on your month, just automatically charged? Because I know I'm constantly going, oh, I have to send in another check.
You can do, I think on the, you'll be able to do online payments to the lunch account with the new system, but we looked at their program that they have for bill payment, and it didn't meet our needs. It doesn't have the right, same kinds of features.
We can't, like, once a month, just automa, you know, whatever my kids use, just bill my...
That would make it easier.
Yeah, it would, and that's why we did look at that system. What they have, the one that we have for, I can't remember what it's, Nutra, what's the?
Nutra.
Nutra, Nutra what? Nutra Kids.
Nutra System.
Nutra System.
It sounds funny, Nutra System.
What they, what they can do is, if we wanted to use their product for tuition and everything, you set up accounts, and you can have a My Store, so you can have your lunch account, and then you can go into a tuition, and it's all different, like, stores, and you can pay things. The problem is that they don't have any collection capacity. They, their fees were a lot higher than MCC, so there wasn't an incentive to switch. And the only thing that they could do is parents can set up an electronic reminder for themselves. It didn't say, it was going to be cost prohibitive, and it didn't give us any added features, so...
All right, well, regardless, this is going to take place next year.
Yeah, I just wanted a heads up to, you know, just say that we're thinking about it, and we can track that data next year and then look at that.
Yeah, just, maybe the kids can basically have your credit card, just walk in and swipe it. Oh, by the way, I want another bag of chips.
Remember in college, you had the little credit card for, like, the student union, and it only worked at certain places and...
All right, the last...
That's for the meal plan.
The last thing I have, and I'm not going to go into it in depth tonight, but I just wanted to make you aware of it, and I'll leave it for you to review, is that we hired a consultant to come in this year to take a look at both of our facilities, both the Freeman Kennedy and the HOD, and to help us develop a long-range maintenance plan so that we would be able to, for budget purposes, better anticipate capital costs, and we would also have a better sense of what kinds of preventative maintenance needs to be done at what stages. So in your packet is a 20-year maintenance plan for both HOD and for Freeman Kennedy. And I found it really helpful in terms of knowing what we can anticipate in terms of maintenance fees, building.
That's this?
That's that. I can get it for you in a larger format, and I can actually get it to you.
Is the head of a pin not available? Oh, my God, it's too small.
That's right, he saw us at his Freeman Centennial School, so all these numbers are off.
No, he is, he was fabulous, I have to say, and he said that he would come to one of our future building, one of our future school committee meetings to go over any questions that you may have. But he did send it electronically also. What he did basically was he looked at all of the different equipment we have in each building. He looked at the warranties. He looked at the life expectancy. He mapped out costs, and I think it'd be very, very helpful. I did share it with the town. I shared it with Jack and with Bob Bullock as well. And I think they're considering contracting with him to look at all the other town buildings as well.
It's really good.
It's fabulous.
Being tiny, I mean, it's very good.
He, the guy that we had do it, Jerry McGarty, is the director of facilities for the town of Weston. He does the schools and the buildings there. He did some training, and he is consulting with Toby, and again, put together the preventative maintenance so that we can get the most life out of all of our equipment and facility.
Good.
So I think it was great, but I'd like to have him come to a future meeting, kind of talk about highlights, things that you...
Big number for next year, though.
Yes. Well, it's what we talked about. The HOD school does need new sprinklers.
Oh, that included the sprinklers?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, then, never mind, because we're...
And he mapped it out, and he split it over, he did a great job. He split it over. He thinks we can replace the sprinklers over four years and do it by section, because you can feasibly do one section of the building a year for $20,000.
They only had that down as $8,000, so, you know, and it's total of $55,000.
Yeah, hold on, I have to see where you are.
The handrail...
Yeah, there's a bunch of things that we need to look at for, not for 2014, for 2015, yeah. For the next year's budget, yeah.
We already approved of 2014.
14, yeah.
We're not doing anything else in 2014.
Yep. What you see there is though, $15,000 of that.
Recommissioning.
Yeah. And then, then the sprinklers, you'll see, you see where it says fire suppression, there's $8,000 for the first part, and then it's spread over the next five years.
But the town has already said that they would be willing to take that out of their capital.
Right, and if they do, we can tell them that, you know, it's, the total cost of that is about $108,000. So at least we have that to do. All right. So I will invite Jerry to a future meeting to answer any questions.
Well, if you can spread it out, that also may help the town be a little more accommodating in other areas, budget, in the budget sense, if we're able to spread that over a few years.
Yep, and I did share it with Jack because I felt that it would help us in terms of capital planning, if we know, you know, what's available and what really absolutely has to be done.
Very good.
All right.
This is just like, makes business sense. This is crazy, crazy for a school to do this, right?
What I will send you, if anybody wants it, he did send me this electronically, and if you click on any of the budget numbers, it gives you a description of what that includes.
Jeff wants it electronically.
It's easier to read in that format, but it was very helpful.
Shouldn't follow you as a child?
That's all I have for tonight.
Okay. It's getting past our bedtime, so real quick on the committee reports. Real quick on Nest, we started our first major fundraiser for the year at the Community Day, thanks to Mark, who went around and sold T-shirts. We have gray T-shirts with, you know, Norfolk, kind of in the arch, in navy blue. Dr. Alardi has sold them as well. So we raised $750 that day. We still have a bunch left because we bought, in order for us to get the price down, we bought 700 of them.
Who can buy them through?
Hmm?
Who can buy them through?
Through me or through? I don't know.
I'll get you one.
I was going to say, I have eight boxes in my garage, so if you want some, let me know, I will...
Go through each of them, no.
I will bring them over to your house. Anyone in town, I will make door-to-door deliveries with the shirts. So they're only $10 each, and they're a really nice, you know, heavy-duty...
Any delivery charge?
Hmm?
Any delivery charge?
No delivery charge, no delivery, not for the town of Norfolk. If you're outside of the town of Norfolk, then we'll have to talk, but, for if you're Norfolk, Virginia. But it's a really nice shirt, you know, kind of has, you know, a lot of the Cape Towns have that, you know, it's a, it's an Ash shirt, and we have them in kid sizes all the way up to double extra-large. And so we're also going to be selling those again at the open houses in the fall as the rest of our fundraisers, and hopefully we'll be able to get rid of the rest of them then, which will be nice. It'll raise roughly $3,000 for the foundation to give, to give grants out, so. KP?
Now, we talked, now, new business, we talked about middle school and high school handbooks, which need to have some uniformity to it, which are making changes. We're in the first draft right now. Increase in lunch pricing up 25 cents.
What?
$2.75. And last part of it is, that was a concern, was student discipline report. So we're going to be going, going forward, we're going to be very diligent about reporting.
Very digital.
Next couple of years, the last couple of years, it's gone up. So I'll provide some data to you, but I should say it was alarming.
Good. Budget? You approved your budget? Ta-da!
Tremendous work.
Technology?
There wasn't a meeting last month.
You don't have any, last meeting got canceled.
Okay. Policy?
I actually don't have my booklet with me today.
That's okay, I can...
End of the house this morning. I know we had to make a couple of incidental changes to a policy for...
PK and, pre-K and kindergarten fees?
Yeah, kindergarten fees, because of the state regulation that's come down. So we have to comply with that. So that incidental change, we're hoping we can do that in just, you know...
In the August meeting.
So the incidental change is basically the BOGO change. If you have two children, you know how we talked about spreading it over two years? The state, you know, listened to our meeting, and like, 30 seconds after our meeting came out with a directive that the, if you have twins or two children in the same program...
They were called buy one, get one?
No, they called it BOGO. They, 50% off for the second.
50% for the second, 75% for the third, yeah.
50% off our children.
Yeah, it's a...
Third kiddo is...
And there was a few other language changes, the things that they required us to include in the policy, so we'll bring that forward in August.
So, I mean, we don't really, you know, we're going, we're informing parents that if they're, you know, they have twins coming in in the kindergarten in the fall, that's what, that's what payment plan's going to be set up, even though we haven't passed the budget, because, I mean, the balance, the policy, because we don't have a choice.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
It's a ghost.
And then there was some, third reading?
First reading.
First reading of this technology one, right?
Yep.
Pretty much scrapped the first...
We did. We looked at several models.
When's the first date from?
No, this is Ross. That was a Ross thing.
I say, this isn't that old.
No.
I remember discussing this. Apparently no good.
Yeah, the, there were several issues with it, and so the, there was a committee that met with Adam, the principals, assistant principals, and they looked at several other models from other districts to make the policy more comprehensive. I did get some legal advice on it as well. Had our attorney take a look at sections of it, and this is the draft.
I apologize, I didn't get a chance to read this, but does it have in there, did this change what the teachers were allowed to put on their, like, Facebook pages and things along those lines? I know that was a big discussion that we had with the teachers' union last time.
Was it more of a friending thing?
Yeah.
There's a different policy, a social networking policy.
Social networking policy is different than this, okay? Because I know that was someone that we had...
Yeah, that was a huge discussion.
This one talks like what they can view with their school-issued laptop.
Got it, okay.
What they can post on the web, what are acceptable uses of technology for users.
We also made, I also wanted to put in, because of recent events that I've seen on the news where school-issued laptops, someone within the school had activated the webcam and stuff, and would be viewing people's, if they leave their computer on, the school can have access to, theoretically could have access to that computer to view any data, and someone could actually activate the webcam. Well, I put in the policy that we're not going to do that unless the laptop is reported stolen or lost, and then we're doing that to recover it.
Right.
Now, that's not to say if someone's using their school-issued laptop and using their webcam, the school does have the right to collect data. And so that's, that's acceptable. We retrieve the data and we see that video footage, that's totally separate than the school activating the webcam itself. I'm not saying that we were going to do that, but I wanted to put that insurance in there, get that in there, so that everyone knew that, look, this isn't going to happen, this is not acceptable, period.
Right.
You know?
Okay. Coach, okay? All right, I will spend some time with this. Good. Any other committee reports? Any new business? Approval of minutes, or a motion to approve the May 14 minutes?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any changes? I think Pam did an awesome job.
Way to go, Pam.
Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And let's see, next meeting, I know Kelly said he really wanted a meeting in July, but I say to heck with him, and I say we go for August. We don't have anything...
I heard he was a jerk anyway. Nobody listens to that guy anyway, I guess. So I, August, I got in here as August 13.
I'm in Sweden. August 13, I have.
That old excuse?
I'll agree if you're in Sweden right now.
Exactly.
I'm away until the 20th.
August 13, I'm not here either.
23. So we can either do...
I'll have a quorum, but that's fine.
I'm here the 7th or the 28th.
We could do the 6th. We usually do Tuesday.
Yep, right, sorry.
Let me see, so the 26th or the 27th? What happened to 28?
No, the 6th or the 27th.
That's what I said.
Ingrid's not here.
I'm gone the middle of the week.
Okay, so the 6th?
Or the 27th.
Or the 27th. I can do, I believe, either day.
I can do the 6th.
I can do either 6th.
6 is fine.
6, okay.
Sounds good.
Are we going to still be doing, are we going to do the school committee retreat thing again like we did last year? Or...
I'd love to do that in September, once we have our strategic plan sort of outlined for feedback.
What retreat? Where do we retreat to? We retreat to the...
We did a free house for dinner.
To the office.
You weren't invited. It was kind of awkward that Mark brought it up while you were here.
It was so much fun, though. That's fine.
I'm like, ixnei, I'm...
I'm good with that. Don't need to invite me to those meetings.
You were invited, but it was...
It was a paper invitation.
It was a paper invitation.
Fine, you're fine, be that way. You do not get the e-vibe.
Exactly. You can webcam in, we'll put you, put you at the table, Skype. Yeah, you can Skype.
No, you don't allow it, so I can't do it.
You were there.
At least I can't vote.
No, that's, that wouldn't be, that wasn't a meeting. That was just a retreat.
You were there. It's only Glenn Kutter.
Yeah, I remember.
He doesn't remember.
It was the second time I had a...
Yeah, we were all there. It's good.
Okay. All right. Okay, a motion to move into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and not to reconvene in open session.
Some moved.
No, okay. Okay, no, it's a roll call vote. Is there a second, first?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Jeff Chalmers, aye.
Mark Flaherty, aye.
Kelly Peterson, aye.
Thomas Doyle? Yes.
It's just going to be different?
Yes.
Sean Dooley, aye. All right, thank you very much. We're out.
Roxanne, thank you for coming.